What's the beer, Rich?
It's called Cherry Momma. He found it somewhere in the house.
I've never heard of it.
It's one of the few that my wife and I both enjoy, so.
Well, that's bridging the gap.
We need to get her out. I mean, there's a lot more I like than she does, so.
Beer?
Yeah, it works out okay then, so.
All right, is everybody ready? I'd like to call the City of Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Stefano.
Here.
Kern.
Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before everybody gets seated, I just want to take this time. I want to let everybody know that, uh, the, let me read off my script so I don't screw up here. I want to let everybody know that on the day of our last month's regular council meeting, we had a previous Commissioner Jim Vaughn pass away. I became aware of it the next day and had every intention of mentioning it at our next regular council meeting. However, with the two, with the full two weeks passing and with Fun Fest just ending, sadly, I failed to ensure it made it into the agenda. That's really no excuse. Sometimes the hustle and bustle of life and business can easily have us lose out on talking about the important things, and that one is my fault. That should have been top priority to mention. Please accept my apologies on my tardiness. Jim Vaughn served as the city's Finance Commissioner from 2003 to 2007. I've only had the pleasure of meeting him once and having a long discussion with him about the city. He was very intelligent, gave great advice, and was a very nice guy who did tremendous amount for his surrounding communities, not just Oglesby. Please let us take a time for a moment of silence as we recognize his service to our city. All right. Um, before we get started here, um, next item is going to be public comment, but I just want to talk a few things. Um, there's a couple items on the agenda tonight that probably sparked a lot of discussion and a lot of, uh, uh, talks in the past. We did recently have a, a working meeting, and in that working meeting, we have very open discussions. Now, a lot of times when we have very open discussions for the working meetings, it doesn't really technically follow Robert's Rule of Order, but under Robert's Rule of Order, there is a provision called unanimous consent. So anytime the council's a hundred percent on board with anything without any, uh, any problems, we can usually take that route. Um, the regular meetings, though, my goal is for them to be more formal. So I say that because, um, we have public comment in the beginning for agenda items and at the end over any topic that anybody wants. I encourage residents or businesses or anybody to talk during that time because after public comment is over, any discussions when we hit the agenda items is really for the council up here. I want to try to remove the environment of, of people shouting things out from the crowd. Um, there might be times that something comes up that on, that's a topic that's important, and maybe a council member wants to engage somebody, inviting somebody up, whether it's an engineer or a speaker or something like that. But other than that, I want to try to keep things as professional as I can. All right, that being said, next up on the item, number five, public comment on agenda items only. I went into a long spiel for no reason, huh? Okay, barring none. Uh, number six, as a, approved, listed as this, approve minutes from June 19th, 2023, and June 28th, 2023 meetings. Uh, the June 28th ones are not ready yet. We had a very long discussion and it takes a little bit of time to go through those minutes. So, uh, if I can get a motion to approve minutes from June 19th, 2023 meeting, please.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approve bills in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents as presented for payment. Any revisions, discussions on any? If not, if I can have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, ordinance number 1227 dash zero seven zero five two three, make changes to noise ordinance. Uh, is there any topics or discussions over this subject at all? I know we talked about it for a while, so if there's no comments or suggestions or anything, I'll be ready to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second for ordinance number 1227 dash zero seven zero five two three. Um, call the roll, please.
Aldridge.
Epstein.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number nine, ordinance number 1228 dash zero seven zero five two three, rescind stipend for event planners. Any questions, comments, or concerns over that? I might want to explain what, why this is on here, right?
Well, you decided this at your last special meeting. It was discussed. Two of the event planners aren't there anymore, and we were coming up on a July first anniversary date, just days after you had that discussion. The existing ordinance said that would renew every July first unless it was changed by a subsequent ordinance. So you voted to change it that night. This just formalizes that decision.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, concerns, comments on that? If I can get a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 1228 dash zero seven zero five two three.
I'll second it.
Uh, roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number 10, recognition of James Monahondo for his 25 years of service.
I'd like to give this plaque to Monahondo, James Monahondo, for his 25 years of service for the Holy League Department. Thank you very much, Monahondo. Really appreciate your service. Thank you. Thanks, Monahondo.
Congratulations again. Number 11, accept and approve recommendations from Building Improvement Grant Committee for the Building Improvement Grant Program. Um, we talked about this a little bit at our last, uh, uh, working meeting that we had. Um, I'll, I'll go over basically the changes. It, there's two sections of it. This is taking one of the very successful items we had in the city for the facade improvement grant. There's been a lot of great changes that we've had in the city. There's several businesses that are prominent that are, that are really fantastic, and I think this is one of the better incentive programs the city came up with. Um, if we do nothing, this incentive program goes away at the end of this year because TIF, it's directly tied to TIF 1. So we put it in two sections. Uh, section one is almost exactly the same as, as the way it is right now, where it, it removes the TIF 1. I think it increases by five thousand dollars as well because this came out like seven years ago. And the important part of the change is there is a group B, a second group with it. This is to help target more of the empty buildings that we have in the city. It basically increases the amount that they can get, and it increases the higher, a higher percentage. Um, so I think it's a great thing. I'm looking forward to it. It's already been successful, so I, I'm hoping it's going to be even more successful. Any questions, concerns, or comments over it? In that case, I'll, I'm ready to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. Can I get, roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number 12, approve, uh, approve utilization of city property for a public dog run. Commissioner Baldridge, you want to talk about this at all, or?
I think it's struggling long enough. Uh, I want to pass this.
All right, if there's no other discussion on it, let's take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the utilization of the city property for a public dog run.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number 13, approve expenditure of funds for fence of, for public dog run. Actually, it says, little typo there. Um.
It's appropriate.
Yeah. Dog done. So even though we've approved the location, this is to help approve the expenditures for the funds there. Uh, any discussion or topics on that at all?
The bid came in to finish that off and block it all in, uh, plus two four-foot entrances with double gates and a 10-foot entrance for the mowers to get in and out to cut the grass. Uh, the bid came in from, uh, Illinois Valley Fence and Pool for eight thousand dollars. It's, seems appropriate for that, so I would like to make a motion to approve expenditure for funds for dog, for fence for public dog run.
Second.
Did you have a question? Hold on.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's since it's his, since it's his department and it's not over the $20,000 mark. I mean, can he, can he not just do it anyways? I mean, do we need official action?
So there is a, there's some kind of, if I'm correct, there's some kind of rule when you're making a public improvement to a piece of property in the city that it's supposed to be. The, I guess the question could be, did we already do that in the one before it?
I think you did, Jason, but I think Rich is just trying to be very upfront about it.
Sure.
You know, this is what I want to do. I want to make sure you guys are all.
I'm totally okay with it. I just think.
I totally respect him for that.
We don't want to get in the, in the practice of, of putting everything on the table like that because otherwise you'd be handcuffed trying to run your department, so I commend you, Rich, for what you're doing.
This has been quite a contentious issue, so better to.
I had no idea.
I, I would agree. I think, I. You're absolutely right. When it's minor items like this, the cost really isn't even the concern, but because this was such a, a public thing to debate, I wanted to make sure I gave everybody every opportunity to say that. And I look at it this way. We didn't have any public comments. We didn't have any public comments at our last, uh, um, working meeting about it. There wasn't really any public comments at the, uh, the park board meeting. So I, in my opinion, we've gone through all the steps to bring everybody involved, go through everything, all, all the motions. Do we need to go through all those motions every single time? I don't think so. But I think when there's something that's potentially contentious with people, I think it's important to do that and be as transparent as possible. So. All right, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, can I get a roll call, please?
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number 14, old business, tabled items. I don't think I have any tabled items that I'm aware of from our regular meetings as of yet. I know some of our, our working meetings we do, so we're still working on some stuff like that. Does anybody else have any old business items? Barring none, number 15, public comments over any topic. Wow, okay. All right, number 16, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Stefano.
Um, so I just want to remind the residents that, uh, because of the July 4th holiday, garbage pickup will be a day late. Um, if you notice, the bills were a little bit higher, uh, for this, uh, what we approved earlier. Just to give you a brief explanation, some of it was, uh, for the electrical upgrades on, uh, Clark Street. Uh, we had an IMEA payment and then also a, a, a payment to our health insurance provider for the city employees. So that, just to give you a roundabout explanation of the difference in number from what it usually is there. Um, I have some good news. The, uh, through the clerk's office, we're going to be applying for a grant that'll allow us to, uh, improve our inspection process. Um, I, I don't want to, I don't want to get too far into it because, uh, it's early in the process. So all I'm saying is, is we're going to try and save the taxpayers some money and, uh, and, and be responsible there. Uh, also, the, uh, council presentation equipment that should be up by our next meeting, uh, will be paid for by the TIF funds, so I just want the residents to know that we're being responsible with their money as best as possible. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Udis.
I just have one item. I will be unable to attend the July 17th meeting. I didn't know if the, um, council would consider moving it back a week so that the whole council would be here.
I mean, we've done it with this meeting. I don't see why we couldn't accommodate it.
Wish you would have told me that ahead of time. You want to move it a week? Um, the only thing, the only thing my concern about that is we have been doing, at the, the last week of the month lately, we've been doing our working meetings. Um, I don't know how, how many months we want to continue that in a row before we start going to quarterly. Um, but that would normally be the week for that. I don't have a problem with that if, uh, if that's important. If it's for any business reading, you, you can.
It's family obligations.
Okay, okay. Uh, because there was a, I often thought about if there's ways that we should modify our, our remote policy.
Attendance policy.
It's, it's, there is some convoluted things in there that we should probably do, but there won't be time to do that officially before then. Um, well, I guess we can do, I hate to do this live because then we're looking at everybody's schedules live. Um, what's everybody's availability to the 24th?
The 24th or 25th?
I could do the 25th if that works.
I can do the 25th.
I'm not available the 25th.
26?
26.
Do it Wednesday again, middle of the week?
I will have a meeting on the 25th, Joe.
26th, Pat?
What about 26th?
The 26th, I think I could be here. We're talking about a meeting here on the 27th.
So you want to have.
Plan commission meeting. So that would mean I'd have a 25th, a 26th, then a 27th. Thank you, guys.
These weekends are good. Um, I will say I'm not, I'm not a fan of, of constantly moving. I, you know, we did this one because, you know, it was the holiday. We wanted to, to work with the commi, I mean, if everybody can make it, though, I don't have a problem with that. But I mean, if there would be one person that had a conflict, then I would say we probably shouldn't do that, though, but.
So is the 26th the date that we're talking about that's on the table at the moment?
I think the 26th is what we're talking about. Is that available for everybody up here?
I'll make it happen.
City Clerk, are you available on 26th as well?
If you're asking me, I'm going to tell you.
All right, well, we don't have it as a, we don't have it as an item, though, but I don't have a problem. Does anybody have any issue with us making a motion to change the official? Anybody have an issue with that?
No problem.
All right, in that case, I will hear entertain a motion to move our July, should look at it right here. Our regular meeting of July 17th to July 26th.
Make a motion. We change the next meeting from July 17th to July 26th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Epstein.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right, meetings moved. Anything else to report?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McDermott.
I'd like to ask the residents to please turn back their trees and bushes to allow access to sidewalks and not to obstruct use of oncoming traffic along our streets. This is important to keep Oglesby safe, okay? Let's work together and make Oglesby safe as well as better. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Aldridge.
Just a couple of things. Uh, one was what Commissioner Stefano was referring to. The $286,000 Clark Street project is now finished. Came in $3,000 under budget. Uh, some of you may have noticed down at Lehigh Park, the pavilion had a lot of cracks with uneven surface. Uh, there had been some tripping issues. It's being worked on now and, uh, should be lifted and leveled to prevent the unsafe conditions and finished by Thursday. And, uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, I got a couple items. Um, one, I'd like to thank all the residents that were standing by on 4th of July to, uh, listen for an announcement across the siren. I do appreciate the chief, uh, helping us attempt to get it to work, but there was an issue with it. Um, so I thank everybody for, for standing by. We are going to get it, uh, looked at and resolved. And, you know, the big reason for the test is to, to see what the functionality even is. I mean, there's still some talks about how well it works and, and what it could be used for in the future possibly. Maybe it's just for public safety things. Maybe it could be used for other stuff, but we need to see how clear that information can be presented. So, and the other thing I do got is I got a letter from Oglesby, Oglesby Public School District 125. Mayor Kern and Council, on behalf of Oglesby Schools, I'd like to thank you for being able to use the city's tractor again for distribution of mulch for the children's play area at both Lincoln and Washington schools. We had a full semi-load of mulch to spread at Lincoln and another portion at Washington. It couldn't have been done without the help of Mr. Watts and the Bobcat. Please extend our sincere thank to you, Mr. Watts, for his help in this endeavor. I would also like to thank J.P. Rose for his crew in helping to spread out the mulch. It was greatly appreciated. We are grateful to have a relationship with the City of Oglesby that made it possible for us to spread the mulch in a much easier fashion with your assistance. We are truly grateful that you had Mr. Watts available for us in order to get the job done and appreciate your assistance. Sincerely, Michael Pillen, Superintendent. So, um, that's really nice they sent that, but I look at it this way is, you know, we're, we're both tax collecting entities. We're in this together, right? So if there's resources that we can share that has a minimal cost to us to, to help things out to make our community better, I'm all for it. Um, before adjournment, I am told there is a couple items for closed session. There's no items that we're taking any action on. The reasons for them is in section 2C of the Opening Meeting Act, provide the public body can close a meeting to the public only when the following topics are to be considered: the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee by legal counsel for the public body, and collective negotiating matters or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Can I get a motion in a second to go into closed session, please?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefano.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. And just so you're aware, there are no planned action items after closed session. Thank you, everybody. At least, hey, at least these, at least these meetings are nice and tight and concise, right? That's the goal. I'm sorry about the two, the two-hour ones, but.
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Not to be big. Not to be big.
...
You just wasted an hour of your life.
Oh, yeah?
I said there was no more action items. All right, everybody's sitting. All right, can I get a motion to go back into open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Just a second.
I need to talk to you about that if I can just do votes by signify by saying aye. Sometimes when we have unanimous consent, I'm kind of curious about that. We have tough conversation about that.
Aldridge.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
Eutis.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Stefan Alley.
Here.
Hurry.
Here. All right, that's all we got. Can I take, get a motion to adjourn, please?
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second, or can I get a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Eutis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefan Alley.
Aye.
Aye.